Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes from January twenty first, twenty five? I need a first and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And second was Alderman Guzman. Okay, any questions to the motion? Can it be a, it can be a voice moment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Audience time. Does anyone want to speak for the committee of the whole? Okay, on to there being no old business, we'll do new business.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest we reorganize the agenda and put the RAP money first since it's so vital. We've been talking about it forever and it's vital we come to a decision on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, second would be, so we have Alderman Florian second, Alderman Felix. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
This is a procedural vote and this can just be, this can be voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, so this is moving item four D under new business to the front. And if we can go to the, the other presentation. And then Don, if you could come up and... So, Don is going to do a quick presentation, or a quick presentation which he had previously given to the Aldermen regarding the state of the RAP funds as they are right now. And then we will go into the different proposals that have been presented by the Aldermen.
Thank you, Stuart. We've been having this discussion for quite some time, ever since the American Place Casino came to town in February of two thousand twenty-three. The council created what we call a revenue allocation plan to allocate those sums of money across particular projects. We identify four sources of funding really for the revenue allocation plan. If you look at the next screen, the gaming tax, right now the gaming tax is bringing in approximately three hundred seventeen thousand dollars a month. Admissions tax is bringing in about, on average, sixty-nine thousand dollars a month. The land lease being paid by Full House Resorts for the, for the use of the property that American Place will be purchasing at some point at two hundred fifty thousand dollars a month, or three million a year. And of course, interest earnings on the money. Money been sitting and been invested since February fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Next screen will show the accumulation of funds. Fiscal year twenty-three was only two and a half months for the operation of the casino, so gaming tax was five ninety-nine, five ninety-nine thousand. Admissions tax for that period of one hundred sixty-four. The land lease for two and a half months of rent or lease on the, on the property, one point four million for the year. Full year fiscal year twenty-four, you can see three million dollars in land lease, gaming tax and admissions tax for a full year, and interest earnings on the money, seven point one million. In the current year, this is projected out to April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. We're using the, the averages for the, for the first few months of this year, at three hundred seventeen thousand for gaming, sixty-nine thousand for admissions tax, and of course, land lease for three million. Interest earnings on the approximately eight point four million for two hundred ninety-one thousand, for seven point nine million. Combined, we are now sitting on sixteen point five million dollars in a revenue allocation plan. We've been working for quite some time in identifying proposed uses of that money. As you know, we are a very large city. We're the ninth largest city in the state. We have about five hundred twenty employees. Risk management needs to have a reserve. We have a very small reserve right now in risk management channels, workers compensation, and all of our liability claims. Our reserve in that fund right now is only about thirty-four million dollars. We need to build up that reserve. We're suggesting that we take ten million dollars of the sixteen point five and put it in the risk management reserve fund. We want to start doing the streets downtown. But before we can tackle the streets, we have to do the lead line replacements. We have five hundred thousand devoted for lead line replacement. Fixed asset replacements, over the last three years, we've been able to replace a large amount of public works vehicles and equipment. We've been purchasing police radios, we've been purchasing police vehicles. We have a placement plan in place for ten vehicles a year. We're working on a replacement plan for public works equipment over the next ten years. We'd like to take one point five million of the RAP money and put it into the fixed asset replacement fund and keep that funding on an annual basis. The parking garage is really in need of significant repairs. It hasn't, it's been band-aided over the years. The, the estimate we've received so far is one point five million to renovate the garage and bring it up to, up to code. Walkegon Library is a city building, it's a city facility. We've never really considered it as part of our capital plan. The maintenance of the library has come solely from library resources. Sure, they get a portion of our tax levy, but then they have their own money from, from different grants and different fundraising efforts. We need to consider the library as a city building and put it on our, on our annual plan for repairs and renovations. Their HVAC system is forty to fifty years old. It's been repaired on a has-needed basis, on an annual, annually, but with a Band-Aid approach. The whole system needs to be replaced. And we're looking at one point two million dollars for the library. Washington Street Corridor, phase one engineering for a million dollars. Seahorse Drive, phase one engineering for five hundred thousand. And ongoing engineering services. At Jesus, if you want, you can talk more about the need for the engineering services. But it is ongoing. We don't have the large enough staff in the engineering department to maintain the kind of service we need for engineering. So we're looking at contracting out services at a hundred thousand a year, and that would continue. So that totals sixteen point two million, sixteen point two million of the sixteen point five that we have available. Is there another chart? Well, we just ran it out for a couple of years, just so you can see. We're, we've got the sixteen two million, sixteen million two hundred fifty thousand fiscal year twenty-five. In fiscal year twenty-six, we're projecting eight point two million dollars in revenue. Following year, eight point three million, year after, eight point four million. And these are possible uses of the funds. The council will decide ultimately how those monies are used, but we're suggesting that we continue to fund the risk management reserve fund. Ten million this year, five the following year, another three million year after. Lead line replacement, continue that program. The fixed asset replacement, continue that. Engineering services, the hundred thousand on an annual basis. Streets, sidewalks, yellys, three million dollars a year. We're funded sufficiently for this fiscal year, for next fiscal year for streets. We'll need to put some money into the infrastructure in fiscal year twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And as part of the library improvements, we're looking at the library in fiscal year twenty-seven for six hundred thousand. And basic masonry repairs, tuck pointing and the building itself, and the following year for five hundred thousand. But that's the program. I think what you're more concerned about this year is probably what we're looking to budget for next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty-six. I know there's other proposals, and I think Stuart's going to talk about proposals that we've seen from the Aldermen. The Aldermen have all made proposals. We have a proposal from Alderman Felix, Alderman Turner, Alderman Guzman. I think you've all contributed in some fashion. And would like to compare our proposal to what else we have on the table.
Can we ask him questions now, or do you want us to wait till everything's presented?
You can ask now.
So, my question is, if you go, can you go back one slide, please?
Thank you.
So, I believe that the parking garage repairs, the library HVAC.
Right.
And the Seahorse Drive engineering could have all come out of the TIF fund, possibly, right?
Sure, yes, they could have.
Okay, but that money was allocated a couple of weeks ago to go to the development. And, and with it going to the development, we risk the chance that the Park District and the School District are going to ask us for their share of that money, right?
That's because the TIF is used for housing.
Right.
And if you have a housing development, the schools, of course, they feel there's going to have an impact, and they can ask for part of the increment.
Right, so it's going to, it's going to potentially cost us five hundred thousand dollars?
Potentially five hundred thousand.
Whereas if we had taken, if we'd reversed this and kept the TIF money for some of these projects and got the money for the developers out of another fund, we wouldn't have that same risk, correct?
And developer would have been...
You guys understand what I just said? Five hundred thousand dollars it's going to cost us potentially, because we took the money out of a different fund. I'm just so confused why we were so adamant the money had to come out of the TIF fund when it's potentially going to cost us a half a million dollars more of taxpayer dollars in the long run. Can anyone explain to me why?
And if it came out of RAP, the developer would have been assured a hundred percent of their funding. Coming out of the TIF, developer, after, after the first phase, is only assured of the increment.
Okay, so did you hear that too? They're not even guaranteed the full amount of money.
You can come and talk to me, you can call me, and hey...
I don't need to call...
Wait, guys.
Because we're supposed to have a discussion over, which is happening right now, it's ongoing right now. Those numbers are not set. We're having a discussion, they just got a response back today, that's an ongoing thing. So you're saying like this is set in stone, it's not...
Well, that's what you voted on, so...
Yes, but the, I mean, I don't know if Stuart can, uh, expand on this.
I mean, once you vote on something, that's what, you know...
Well, what I can, what I can say is, is that what was voted on with regard to that development was a term sheet. And the resolution directs Corporation Council to prepare an agreement and bring it back to you guys with the final terms that are in line with that term sheet. We have gotten some feedback from the developer about some issues that they had with how the term sheet was written. Now, they had agreed to that, they had not indicated that before we voted on it. But there will probably be some, I'm waiting for a written request from them on how they would like, they would prefer to move forward, which is different than what the term sheet said.
This was all explained to the Aldermen beforehand, that every single one up here knew that that's what it was going to be when we take it out the TIF. I mean, I do know that staff met with you an hour before, and as they were sitting here, they heard it, they had their attorney here. So now they're coming back and saying, oh, we want something different. Well, I don't know that you are under no entitlement at this point to give them something different, because that's not what you voted for. So we have to go on and make other decisions now, because the library does need their money to start their repairs for spring. So one way or the other, we have to tell them how they're going to get that money. Alderman Guzman?
Well, I got a question about the library itself. Okay, so they get tax dollars, okay? Then we give them more money. Then on top of that, we give them more money. And on top of that, they go get funds from other places. So why is they, why are they even a separate entity? We should have, we should take over the, the library and put a department head right there.
They are not a separate entity, they are part of the city.
Yes, but they have a board there. They don't answer to the city of Walkegon, so why don't we take it over, put a department head, and then we run it? Since we're paying, we're foot, we're fitting the bill for everything anyway.
Well, that's not how it's set up right now, and that would have to change structure. Alderman Felix?
It could be.
Back to the RAP money. It's not, you're acting like it's, there's no money here, right? If you look at the other one, well, some of the, I'm in favor of doing the, the library and the parking garage, and there's money for it. So it's not going to disappear, because we're deciding to do the redevelopment. It's being worked on. And if you look into the details in terms of the development, it still was directed by someone to structure it in that way. So that's part of the thing that now it's, it's a lot of things going on in that, into that deal. But it was directed in a certain way, so we're uncovering all that information. It's not set in stone, we have to vote on it today. I understand it's something that is very complex and we want to make sure we do it, there are things the right way. So I'm in favor of slowing it down now, make sure we get it, get things the right way. We're voting on this now, which we can vote on it. And if there's extra money, then we can have another conversation about the redevelopment. But I don't think that's what's in question right here, right now.
Well, I mean, we do kind of need to know, are you going to take this out of TIF, or are you going to take this out of RAP money? Because the library needs to, I mean, the library is a warming and cooling center. They need to get an idea of, get this going, so that we don't not have air conditioning this summer, so...
We can all agree, I think, for that one. I would agree, a lot of people agree on it. I don't think we have any people voting against fixing the library, I think it needs it.
That would be me.
Except for Alderman Guzman, but I'm for it.
The way I see it, it's not an emergency, and we basically need to decide. I mean, because one point two and then another six hundred thousand, that's two million on top of what they're giving and what, and we keep giving and giving and giving and giving and giving, I mean, I don't see you return. And then I remember some years ago saying, I'm not sure if it was during this administration, the last one or the one before, that one of the board members just said, give us our money and leave us alone.
That wasn't this administration.
I feel we need more control of that, of that. So before we give them any money at all, everything is working right now, it's not a dire emergency. We could put that, we could put a pinhole on that until we decide what we're going to do with them.
Okay, I'm going to say one...
If we're going to keep giving them taxpayer dollars on top, on top of taxpayer dollars, on top of taxpayer dollars, on top of taxpayer dollars.
We don't, okay, can I explain their situation? Is they have always been structured under the city of Walkegon. Long ago, the Park District was, they broke off and became their own taxing body. The library is not. So we are responsible for the building they are in, we are responsible for, they are essentially city employees, we just don't daily manage them. The problem is, you're right, other administrations, long before now, came in with a sheet of paper with a number on, and that's what they got.
Exactly.
That's not what this library is doing. This library sits down with Don, like every other department head, and goes through exactly what their money is. They go after grants, but we go through a lot of this, they report to, to Don just the same way. Now, we have not done capital improvements in the library for years. We can't let, just like we're talking about a parking garage or anything else, we can't keep letting our buildings go, because when it does come time to repair them, they all need to be repaired at once, and we're sitting here making choices like we are now, because this has been years of accumulation of not doing projects, so...
I totally agree with you, Mayor, it needs to be taken care of. But I think it should wait until we decide what they're, we're going to do. If we're actually going to just put a department head in charge of that and, and remove the structure of appointed board members.
You can't remove the structure. It's under law, it is, it is, although it is a local library board, you cannot get rid of the board. They do have the right to their own council, that's all by statute. We have looked into that.
Then we can petition the state to, to see if they can put it on the statute.
So you would ask the state to change the law to get rid of this particular library?
Not get rid of them, they would stay as a library, but the control would be the city's. They would come under our wing instead of independent wing and having a board.
You can't just sit up here and change the laws, there's a whole process you have to go through.
I understand that.
This is who they are now, and this is what we're working with now. I'm going to call on Alderman Felix, I think you were next, and then Alderman Martinez, okay? Alderman Felix?
Oh yeah, so I think it is important that we take care of this, and for the most part, I mean, it is a warming center during the winter. And it's almost seventy years old, so it's really outdated, it's very, it's critical that we take care of this. There's other needs that the library has. I reviewed the report, but definitely this is something that we should allocate this money for. I think most of us can agree.
I agree, the, and I've been up here almost six years now, we almost never increase the budget for the library. I think they're always forced to work out of the same amount of money they had the year before. And they do an amazing job at what they do. They've reinvented themselves when, you know, people went to online stuff and books aren't such the thing. And I think our library does an amazing job, and I think we need to do everything we can to support them. I do want to go back again to the money, though, because I want to point out that both the staff and Alderman Newsom, who's been up here longer than all of us combined practically, recommended we not take this money out of the TIF fund, but yet it was still voted on that that's what we needed to do. And that's the question I still haven't gotten answered, is why the majority of you insisted that that money come out of the TIF fund? I just don't understand why that was so important.
I would like to address that, once we take care of these items. We want to vote on something for these things that are very important. This is, that, that development deal is not on, it's not a line item here. So you can always reach out to me too if you have more questions again.
The one thing that is important is if we, if you start putting money from RAP, say to the library, and it could have been used as a TIF, and now they want to change what they want to change, you can't, you can't keep doing that, because, you know...
I think once we dig into this, we're going to start to see that not everything, how it's placed on there, is going to be like that. That's where the discussion is going to go into, the rest of the items.
I, I just, I want to interject one thing. We do have another presentation that shows the different proposals and how the mayor's proposal differs from Alderman Felix's proposal. I don't know if you want to show that now, or if there are other questions for Don specifically, it's your meeting, though.
I'll ask your question. Didn't you, I'm sorry, I skipped you, go ahead, Alderman Martinez.
I just want to say, the TIF, I mean, I think, the way I vote is because the TIF money is supposed to be used for redevelopment and renovation, and that's exactly what we're doing downtown. Whether, with approving the TIF fund, we would have came back the next day, and we would still have these problems that, that defixed and the replacements and, and the improvements. So I don't think it really makes a difference, but my question to you is the fact that what is, you have a long list of replacements, you have renovation, you have improvement, what of important are you going to fix first? Or I see in a itinerary, but I don't see, you know, what's going to be addressed first. Do you have that? I mean, what needs to be addressed first, fixed before, what we say is really on, you know, really needs to be, what really needs to be addressed?
Well, all of these would kind of be addressed, I mean, your projects would be, you know, you'd have one group working on the parking garage. You'd have another group working, like engineering is working on two things. They wouldn't all happen at exactly the same time, because you couldn't have all the engineers, but that's what the money would be designated for.
But I just want to make sure that, I mean, that we're talking about improvement, and I don't want to, you know, whatever, whatever necessity needs to be fixed first, I think we need to address that first, and then worry about the second parts, the improvements and all that.
So the only thing that Alderman Florian is bringing up about the TIF is that if these improvements were made out of the TIF money, you're not paying other entities. Where when you do a redevelopment, the School District, the Park District, everybody else gets that chunk, where you wouldn't have that if you were putting them back. So it's just something that, you know, that's why staff had brought it up, is that it can change that. It can long-term give you more money for your, more bang for your buck.
Mayor, could I just make a quick comment? You know, we've talked about this now for several meetings, maybe it might feel nice to walk away having locked in at least some agreement. So I don't know if anyone's open for this, but maybe if we have a consensus generally on the library, maybe we could vote on that now, if you guys are willing to, to separate out some of these, because it's going to be a lot longer discussion about some of the other items. But I'm hearing several people that are in favor of funding the HVAC for the library. So if you guys are on board for voting for that tonight, that might...
Before we vote out?
One way to move this forward, even if incrementally.
I have a question, thank you, ma'am.
I think there's other...
With all things considered regards to the library, I know that last year, I think they, they built out a sensory room for autistics. Recently, they built out a makers' space where they do sewing and they teach people...
It's not a space per se. Tiffany, would you like to come up and address those?
These are grants too, right?
So some of those were done, like they repaired one of the rooms. So that was done with insurance money. The other was done with a grant that they got. It wasn't necessarily city money that went into those.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, so, as has already been discussed, the library budget has remained relatively flat for the last many years. And the library has a new administrative team that we've all been here for the last two years, and a new board. We have a new facilities manager, new administration, I'm new. And coming in, we did see the issues with the building and trying, that there's a history of the library balancing some of the improvements to public spaces, because that's what people are coming in for, for materials, for spaces to study, for community groups, for programs. And the building infrastructure was sacrificed. We don't have any record of these things being done. We need the elevator, the HVAC, these things are fifty to sixty years old. When I came on board, I was very thrilled. We have an extremely active foundation and friends of the library, but when you look at an overall budget in any kind of public library that I've worked with, it's like property taxes is ninety-five percent. That funding that might come from a grant, we just got a grant to remodel the youth department, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The foundation did do two fundraisers, we raised twenty thousand dollars for the sensory room and twenty-two for the makers' space. That, that's really small and comparative, so that property tax money is going for staff, benefits, building maintenance supplies, cleaning, and repairs. And we are band-aiding all of these repairs. So we've worked really diligently, our finance manager is doing more investments. We're trying to try to maximize everywhere that we can get another revenue stream. But, you know, we're not having a gala like other places where we're asking for three hundred dollars. We want to do something fun for the community, so those fundraisers are just asking for twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars. And so getting twenty thousand dollars in to make a, a big difference with a room like the sensory room that's being used by schools and therapists and parents is a really big deal, and it's not costly. But we really need that funding for the infrastructure.
So I asked, thank you very much. So I asked about the, those two programs specifically, because I know there was a cost associated with them, and then I questioned if, if there's such a dire need for HVAC, wouldn't it have been better to spend monies on that than to build out new program spaces?
Pardon? Well, again, our budget, we, we just did a capital assessment in the spring to try and even get in dollar figures for these things. We know that a replacement of HVAC requires engineering and our architects to draw plans, it goes out to public bid. We have to put down a down payment, and it could take a whole year to get that equipment built and installed. So it is something that, again, we could, the foundation could have a fundraiser and raise twenty thousand dollars, and how many years would it take them to save up a million dollars? That's not really, their purpose is to kind of have that impact in the public spaces. And the library just hasn't had a capital plan.
When, when did the issue with HVAC come to light? When did that become known, that there's a problem with HVAC that it needs to be replaced?
Again, just coming in, knowing that we were band-aiding, we did some repairs to the elevator. We've had the HVAC come in and have to do repairs where we are having...
Last year, and the year before? How long? When did, when did you become aware of these issues, is what I'm asking?
It's just that they're at the end of life, so when you kind of get a capital assessment...
No, but he's asking when, so what I will tell you is, they're bored just of...
Within the last, we just got a capital assessment done this last spring. So, that's why we have the whole readout, and we have a capital savings plan, but...
So they have, they've put up the projects that need to be done. And I have said at this point, because our budgets are not endless, and we're going to have a tight budget this next year, let's do one item per year, so that we are not behind. The same thing happened when I came into office and... The same thing happened when I came into office, and we had all the fixed assets, that, meaning all the police cars and everything, that had not been updated in years. A matter of fact, we didn't even have a list of what our assets were. So how do you know when they need to be replaced, when you don't even have a list of what the assets are? So now we know how many cars we have in each one, and then we plan on 10 per year, so that we don't run into that problem. This is what we're now starting with the library. For years, in a sense, even though they came under the city, we counted them as the ugly stepchild that we never really included in as part of the city. Now, the director comes to staff meetings, she's part of what is the city team. Because the only way we're going to really understand what the library's needs are is when we have that communication. Her and I also meet once a month, so that we know what are the projects that are, like, what are the things that are being funded by, you know, foundation? What are the things that are capital improvement things? So that's where things have changed, is the level of communication that we now have with the library, that we actually have that information. And this board has been a tremendous board. It is not the same board that we had three, four years ago, where we had on videotape people calling each other political horrors and all of that. We have a very good board that talks to each other, that outlines what needs to be done. And they went and got the capital improvement, and then prioritized what needs to be done. So that now, when they're sitting down with Don for the budget, we know, what is your number-one priority? What is your number-two priority? That kind of thing. Alderman Felix?
One thing I do want to ask, since you're up here. In terms of the library itself, are you guys, were talking about any cuts in staff, or anything like that?
Not at this time.
Okay, okay. And again, I'm for it, you know. But I think this is one of the things that we can, a lot of us can agree to. We do need it, and it's in the right time to do it.
So then, if you guys just wanted to put a motion in to do this, let's do it.
Can I also mention, you have changed, you've changed staff from part-time, or from full-time to part-time. Am I correct on a lot of places?
When I came in, there were a lot of changes during the pandemic, with a lot of, you know, a lot of nonprofits, a lot of businesses. And so to keep the library running, they, we had an abundance of full-time staff. And we still have that. But where it makes logical sense, and where we need more flexibility and more coverage, as people who are full-time are leaving, we're changing those into different part-time roles. But that's a, that's a work in progress to see just, to have the right-sized staff for each department and each function that they do.
Alderman Florian?
I just have a question about the fact that the library is probably one of our only heating and cooling centers in the city, right?
Open past five, yes.
And by law, are we required to provide that? Like, I would think that might be...
Not that I'm aware of. I think that...
But it's definitely a good idea, in a city this size, to have somewhere for people to stay warm and stay cool when the temperatures are at extremes. And as you said, it's going to take a year to build this equipment. So if it does become a dire emergency, we're going to be without heat and cooling for an entire year, which could lead to burst pipes and other issues that are going to cost us way more down the road. And you've made this equipment last 40 or 50 years already? I mean, I agree, we should, we should at least agree to do this, if we can't do anything else.
If I could say, too, just that, you know, we do have a comprehensive capital assessment. These are just the really pressing items that we know are going to go out of compliance or could fail. It's not all of it. We're still looking at the library budget, so that we can save on our end, too, to work on all of the projects listed in here. And just as a part of the discussion about redevelopment, that's, the library's here downtown. We are trying to do things to draw people in, to bring them here, and to be a part of all the activity downtown. So, you know, think of us also as a cog in that wheel of redeveloping the downtown.
The library is a city function. Just like Public Works isn't on our, on the City Hall property, they are just off-site, but it doesn't mean that they need to be forgotten. I will say, for many, many years, they were.
I didn't like from before about, "Give us the money, don't tell us what to do."
Right.
At, over the years, over and over and over again. I didn't care for that one bit, and that's what a lot of these boards do.
This group, and under Tiffany's leadership, things are entirely different. Like I said, she's involved in staff meetings, she's involved in the budget process. It's not walk a number over to Don and say, "This is what I need in my budget." She goes through everything with Don, just like every other department head does here.
I go in there all the time, so...
Can I...
I mean, we can move this forward, if you guys want.
Second, Hayes?
I could, I could put a motion in to move this forward.
Okay.
And then we could vote on it today, and they get their money today.
Okay, Alderman Guzman, you're making a motion?
Yes, I will.
Second by Alderman Felix. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk? Can you define what the motion is, please?
This is a motion to approve 1.150 million for the HVAC system for the library, out of the RAP money.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to hold the rest of the discussion around the RAP over to our next meeting, and move on with the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So now, we're gonna, can I have an, in favor of that? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Let's go to item A. I need a first and a second on the motion.
First.
Second.
Okay. First was Alderman Guzman, second was Alderman Martinez. It's an ordinance amending various provisions of the Waukegan Liquor Control Ordinance regarding sales without a license. So Corporate Counsel, would you like to explain that?
Yes, so if we can go to the next slide, please. So this is a legislative proposal from Alderman Guzman. Alderman Guzman noted that the, our code, although it included a statement that says sales without, sales of liquor without a license was a violation of the city's liquor control ordinance, it didn't give a specific penalty. And therefore, it would default down to a penalty, basically between $100 and $750. Alderman Guzman asked that we look at amending the ordinance and a copy of the amended ordinances in the paper packets that you have been provided with, which would clarify that not only is this a violation, but that there would be specific penalties. And those specific penalties are up on the screen here. These would all be taken together. So if a person or establishment was found to be selling or offering for sale liquor without a valid city license, the first violation would result in a monetary fine of $1,000. It would also create a prohibition on the city from issuing a city liquor license for two years to either that person or that establishment. And the reason that we're saying a person or establishment is that someone could, you know, basically be doing this from the trunk of their car, or doing from, you know, from not a business establishment, but if they were selling in a way that was completely kind of off-grid. Finally, that if there was a business license, that there would be a three-month suspension of the business license. That is one of the, kind of, the strongest penalties that is proposed here, because it would basically require, let's say that this was a convenience store or a restaurant, it would require that business to shut down. Now, these wouldn't be absolutely automatic. Once the citation was issued, the offender would have a chance to go before the city's hearing officer. They would not be going through the, before the city's liquor commissioner, because the liquor commissioner only decides issues when you have a license. If you don't have a license, this is just a straight-up violation of the code. We'd go before the city's liquor commissioner. You can see that the penalties increase based on the number of violations. Second violation, $2,000. Five-year delay in issuance of a valid liquor license, and a one-year suspension of a business license. Third violation, $3,000. Permanent ban of that person or establishment from receiving, that establishment under its current ownership, from receiving a liquor license. And a revocation with opportunity to reapply in two years of the business license. This would be a, a very strong penalty for any business, person or business that was selling liquor without a license. Given the severity of this penalty, we would probably want to make sure that this was publicized, and that this was given out to all current liquor licensees, to know that, don't let your license lapse. And that is my summary, Alderman Guzman. If you'd like to say anything else, I wanted to, thanks for giving me the time to summarize that.
So I guess one question...
Thank you.
Okay, can I just ask a question in this? Because whether or not you want to include this. So we have some businesses that come in and pay for their liquor. They pay their food and beverage once a year. They have to be, to be able to renew their license. But then, as soon as their license is renewed, they let that lapse again, until next year, when it's time to maybe renew their liquor license. So is that something that you want to also put in this, or not?
I, yes, we can amend it to, that they must keep up with their obligations for taxes. Once a month, their sales tax must be intact, every single month.
That's monthly?
Is what?
Is that monthly?
Yes, it's a monthly basis.
It doesn't have to be, they can do it, yeah.
It's monthly, quarterly, or yearly. So it's kind of difficult to say that, because, I mean, whether you pay your taxes monthly, quarterly, or yearly, I mean, how can you go into that? So I guess Stu would have to...
If you do it yearly, what some of them do is they come in and they pay right before they renew, and then they don't pay a thing again. Really, it would be fair to say quarterly. Monthly would not be, that's a little strict, in my opinion. But certainly, quarterly, you could turn around and say. Because we have a number of businesses that will pay it just to renew their license, and then we never hear from them again until next year. And if they don't renew their license, you never get that money. So I think it's good to do it quarterly.
Add that on, quarterly? Because I don't, I mean, I know some people don't pay their taxes. I mean, I try to do it on a monthly basis, so I won't get that huge bill. But some people do it quarterly, or even annually. They don't, I mean, they're willing to write that big check? Yeah, sometimes.
If I may.
But before we go there, can I say a few words, how come it, this actually got introduced? The reason I introduced this is because I saw a lot of places that they would get caught serving liquor without a liquor license. And then they would get their citation, and then they would play, "Mr. Nice Guy, hey, I'm doing whatever I can." And then they would come to the city council, and then the city council would, would give them a license. So this is, makes it a lot harder. So basically, you get a violation, you get your $1,000, you get your license taken away for a couple of months, and then that would be visible to the city council that this is what happened. Okay, you did get a penalty, you did lose your license for a couple, for a couple of months. And then, once you do it three times, you're done. You're done permanently. You'll never be able to hold a liquor license in the city of Waukegan.
Alderman Florian?
So I have a couple of questions. First of all, you said if you do it once, you have a couple months' suspension. But this says prohibition of issuance of liquor license, first violation, two-year delay.
You lose your business license for a couple of months, but you will not be able to reapply for a liquor license for two years?
That seems pretty harsh to me.
Then you shouldn't be selling liquor without a liquor license.
Okay, so then my next question, I don't sell liquor, so just so you know, but... So what about people who have bought a business, but didn't transfer the license correctly? Does this apply to them?
Well, actually, I'm going to change that to give, after this is done, then I'm going to put in a new motion to give a 30-day to 60-day time lapse to actually go into the whole, the whole process of that.
Okay, Clerk, I don't know what you mean.
So basically, if your license, let's say, okay, so right now, the code, the liquor code is if you, April 1st, no, May 1st, you don't renew your license, April 2nd, you're done. It's gone. The state gives you 30 days to, to come up with the money, or whatever you're going to do.
But you still didn't answer my question. So let's say I buy a business that sells liquor, but I don't transfer the license to myself. I keep, I keep serving, quote-unquote, "under the old license." I'm violating the liquor code. Does this apply to me? I'm selling liquor without my license, I'm selling liquor with their license. Technically, to me, that's selling liquor without a license. And that's why I always complain about that when people come before us.
That would be a Stu question.
So, so the, and this is very common, as Alderman Florian has noted, is that you have businesses that transfer, sometimes they're not aware that they even need to come to the city. And one of the issues is that, although you can transfer ownership, you actually can't transfer a liquor license. A new license has to be issued. The whole amendment that we recently went through, that Alderman Guzman sponsored, allowed for, instead of the number of available licenses to be reduced automatically, for there to basically be kept open, available license, but that new owner still had to come in and get their license. They needed to apply for it, fully qualify, go through the background check, provide the fee, and it made the issuance administrative, no longer having to come to the city council. The problem is, in practice, that doesn't always happen cleanly. Even if we made it purely administratively, it doesn't happen cleanly. So Alderman Florian, you are correct, that if someone sells a business, does not notify the city, continues to operate, and there are some things that you can do in operating agreement. We had this with Tony's, when their ownership changed, but it was still Tony's. That's a little bit different. In this case, if you fully sell the business, you're operating under a license. You haven't told that the sales happened, you haven't applied for your own. Yes, this would be a violation of it.
And that means they're going to be shut down for two years. Can't sell liquor for two years. They're going to lose their business license for three months, and they're going to lose their liquor license for two years. So if a restaurant does this, they're going to be able to, they're not going to be able to work at all for three months, and they're not going to be able to sell liquor for two years, is what this says. That seems, even me, who likes to punish people, this seems pretty harsh.
Then don't sell any liquor in my city without a liquor license. Our city.
Mayor, I'd like to speak, please.
I agree, it is kind of harsh.
Alderman Turner, and then Alderman Martinez.
Thank you. All right, so Alderman Guzman and I talked about this at length, and, but as I read it, Alderman, this is extremely harsh. And as you know, I am pro-business, and I often say we can't be business-friendly if we're not business-friendly. Not suggesting that we need to be more business-friendly for a liquor store, or a liquor purveyor of liquor. What I'm saying is, every business, every, particularly small business, operate on an extremely thin margin, as it is. So if they violate this liquor law through clerical error, often what happens is, is the business is waiting for an invoice from a city. They don't get the invoice, and they kind of forget it. So it's not like they're of nefarious intent, they're shucking, you know, trying to duck something. But it happens, right? So I, I can, I can go with you, maybe on the fines and the suspension of the liquor license, but to shut a business down, I can't, I can't see that, man. That's just too much. And I'd ask that you reconsider.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
What about after the third violation, we give them a suspension of some sort, but not, I don't know, I wouldn't say two years, but something along those lines, after the third?
I mean, I'm willing to negotiation on the first or the second. I, I mean, I'm willing to negotiation on the first or the second time, but the third time, it has to be gone. Totally. Totally has to be gone.
I won't support any attack, uh, uh, suspension of, of the business license. You want to talk about liquor license, fine, I'm with you.
Yeah, the liquor.
I'm not gonna put somebody out of business for a clerical error.
No, just the liquor. Uh, and that's after the third violation.
I'm not gonna do it for a business. You do what you want, I'll back you up on the, on the liquor license violations, but not, I'm not gonna shut down a business for making a clerical error.
Just the liquor license. What do you guys think?
I agree.
Alderman?
Would you reconsider?
Yes. Let's pass this today.
Can I, can I also suggest, looking at the monetary fines there for the first violation, I think we had to send a message to them, $1,000 is nothing to them. Can we raise that, maybe to $2,000, and then raise that up from there? Because a thousand is nothing, I mean, how, that's nothing to these business owners, so we need to, it's gotta be unprecedented, you know, to, to say, "Hey, you're getting a $2,000 fine." Maybe they'll reconsider, or be more responsible, you know, to know that my license are coming up, and, you know, own it, you know?
I think a thousand dollars will get their, a thousand dollars will get their attention. I mean, you're not trying to break somebody's back for making a, an error. I'm, I'm, I think a thousand dollars is sufficient, you, you're escalating 1,000, 2,000, and then 3,000 dollars for the violation, and after the third violation, if you want to suspend, permanently revoke their bus, their liquor license, we could do that, but, but, you know, I, I'm not here to excessively penalize someone for, for, uh, an error. And think about it, Alderman Guzman, you own a business. If you mistakenly violated this ordinance, you didn't, you didn't get the invoice, you didn't pay your taxes, you didn't get to renew your license on day one, and then you got a $1,000 fine, and, and you had to shut your entire business now for three months, that's the entire summer, you're out of business, you're done. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna crush your business.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking about after this, is putting a motion into giving a gap after, um, the May 1st, just like the city does.
Why don't you guys hold this over and rewrite it the way that it should be, and let's vote it at the next, uh, committee of the whole, because I think it still needs some work. So if that's okay, can we hold that one over?
Definitely, thank you.
Second.
I'd agree to that.
Okay, um, we don't need a motion for that, right? Do we need a first and second?
Um, well, we didn't actually call for a motion on this one, so, uh, the, basically, you're just agreeing to continue this, you're agreeing to continue this matter to the next committee of the whole, which will be-
Yeah, so I guess I'll put it on hold until the next committee, okay, or the whole meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Guzman.
Um, I need a first and a second for an, uh, can I have first and a second first, before the item B? It's an ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Okay, so that was Alderman Turner and Alderman Florian, and it's an ordinance amending section 2-40 of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances to establish a new standing committee of the city council dedicated to public safety and health.
That was not me, that was Alderman Bolton, just a-.
Oh, I'm sorry. You guys sound alike when you talk in here. So it was Alderman Bolton and Alderman Turner were the first and second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, if we can, so the next slide, this is Alderman Turner's proposal to add a new standing committee to the city council. Standing committees are permanent committees, which meet on a regular basis. Uh, this would add a new section under section 2-40 of the code, which would create a public safety and health committee, and its purpose and scope would be related to public health and the environment, including, but not limited, but not limited to air and water quality, reducing, um, uh, reducing, sorry, actually mitigating health threats to the community through environmental regulations and performance standards, threats to public safety and health arising from crime and traffic, community relationships and communications with the city's public safety departments, the public safety departments, including both police and fire. That is, um, that, that language is in line with the other language for committees, is relatively open-ended, uh, but this is Alderman Turner, if you'd like to discuss the, um-
Can I just say one thing before we start? This would have to become effective May 1st, because it would be out of the next budget. Right now, there's no allocation for this. So, without an allocation, it would have to come into effect on May 1st, when the new budget comes in. I have a question. Alderman Bolton?
Yes, I have to ask, um, why is this not already added to some existing committees?
Um, it just wasn't approved as one that we've done. We got rid of, um, public, we had what, public, um, these were combined, you're, like, in the former administration, so I didn't come up with these, these were part of the former administration, they had streamlined them, and so we just kept those committees. And then we added subsections, so like, environmental goes on, I know it used to be-
Public Works.
Public Works. So that's already a s, part of the standing committee. So that's why this needs to be restructured, and reallocation of funds, because, as you know, chair people receive a stipend for that, so that's all part of needing to come out of a different budget, so it would become effective May 1st. Alderman Florian?
Um, I, I believe, I mean, I think what Alderman Bolton was saying is, these things are already covered under other committees, and so I'm curious why we need to create a separate committee just for these things, and the, um, the community relationship and communication with the city's public, I mean, that's already all taken care of. There, the police post everything online, people can see that. We get a report regularly from the fire department about the calls made from the 911 center. I, I mean, I, I guess I'm confused why we need to create a whole new committee for information that's already out there and being shared, and-
And so, if I could add to that, that exactly is my question. Uh, well, I guess would be, could we add this to an existing committee already?
I think it's already covered under existing-
It's actually covered, and that's why it was taken down to this number of committees before, but I know there's some aldermen that feel like, you know, the, um, for the police, they'd like things put out earlier than what they are. The problem is, there are, when things are under investigation, you cannot post them. You cannot tell the community about that.
Right, that's breaching confidentiality.
You know, I, I sponsored this, and I, I'd really like to speak to it, if I may. Thank you. So, it, it, the fact of the matter is that none of these things are ever discussed, whether they're under Public Works Committee, or any other committee, there's never any, uh, ad hoc discussion of it, it just doesn't happen. And this is why, and you'll remember, several months ago, many months ago, Alderman Felix brought this up. And so what we're asking for is a formal venue where we can, we, the aldermen and the public can discuss public safety issues, as well as, and, and as a subset of public eight, uh, public safety, uh, the environmental issues that arise. So most recently, as an example, and only as in one example, uh, most recently, there was the issue with the destruction of the old Saint Therese Hospital, and the asbestos that was thrown out into the, into the environment.
Allegedly. You might want to be careful there.
Pardon me?
Allegedly.
Allegedly. Thank you, Thomas. Thank you. So allegedly, asbestos was thrown out into the community, and then there was the destruction of the water tank, and so, none of those things ever were discussed at large, or, or in, in depth, um, in the council, or, or committee at all, or anything, so. This is, this is what's led us to this point.
Okay. I, I mean, I don't care whether you guys form the committee or not, what I will say is, that's what, number one, when we have, even though it's Public Works Committee, or whatever committee it is, you guys block each other from asking questions that you should be able to ask, because you're all here to represent all of your wards, so when you say to an alderman, "No, you're not on that committee, you can't speak," that doesn't promote those discussions. Two, you know, all of these things have been discussed when the approval was done. So that was when questions and everything were to be asked, and all of that. Alderman Florian?
Yeah, I, I just-
Second.
I just want to point out that just tonight, in the Public Works Committee, we had a report from Planning and Zoning on our sustainability report. So we did discuss the environment, and what we've been doing, and what we plan to do, right in the committee today, just, and you said it never gets discussed, it was just discussed tonight.
Oh, this kid, this committee is, we envisioned it wouldn't, I don't even know what the sustainability is. Rachel came up, and she said her definition of sustainability, so you can't even define it. I would like to read four bullet points. This is, uh, from the motion that Stu was kind enough to draft, and, and so, I, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, just four bullet points that Stu called out, and Stu, correct me if I misspeak. Uh, A, determine how commu, how community input, uh, could be provided, uh, option to establish a board or commission in public hearings. Uh, B, committee to draft a letter to Governor Pritzker and U.S. senators regarding air and water quality and pressure, uh, and pressure the federal EPA to expand toxic chemical list. C, public safety, violence, public accountability board, uh, traffic, gun violence, I think that's covered under violence, uh, police and fire services. Uh, and finally, environmental safety, integrated land use and zoning, restrict man, toxic chemicals from new land use. So none of those things are ever discussed in any committee or, so, um, I'll hand it over to Alderman Felix, if you will, Mayor.
If I may-
I'm gonna take a little more discussion, and then we are going to, because we need to start the meeting. Alderman Bolton, or, I'm sorry, Alderman, I'm, wait, 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 I told Alderman Felix, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, so part of the things, part of this committee that we, we should be doing, and I'm definitely open to doing it, along with whoever would like to be, or whoever, however we decide to do this, is, uh, we need to have more, a stronger communication, a stronger relationship with our state attorney. I met with our state attorney, um, and, you know, there's a few, you know, we need a refresher with the police department, there's a few other things that, if we take lead, we take charge in this committee, we can help out the crime in our community, and just by bringing some of these topics. I don't know, if you guys have talked to any policemen, or any, uh, you know, at least in my ward, there's a lot of violence going on, sometimes they feel like there is, um, there's no hope, they sometimes don't even call the police, and there's a lot of other issues with businesses and stuff that I would like to address. We can do that, we can have that conversation, bring it into the discussion. It might not be all the time, you know what I mean, maybe we don't have items all the time, but we definitely need it right now, and that's the reason why it's important to, um, to, uh, have something like this apart. And another thing I did want to mention, as far as I know, are, um, I'm open to whenever you guys would want to do it, if you guys are willing to, but I, our budget is not set yet, so we, you know, we can still always work it out, but of course, I know that we want to make sure we have a balanced budget, so I'm, I'm open for whenever you guys would like to do something like this.
Can we, um, get a more defined description of this, and have it at the next meeting? Because I do want to start our council meeting off on time. Would that be okay? Alderman Bolton?
Yeah, I was just gonna validate the point, Alderman Turner, these are some va, valid issues that definitely needs to be addressed, and I was wondering, can we hold it over for further discussion?
Thank you. Alderman Felix and I will, uh, meet with Stuart Weiss and put something in summary, right? We're not gonna have a whole detailed presentation, but we'll put something together.
And, I mean, the, the language that's up there is the language in the ordinance, and, you know, a lot of the things that Alderman Turner had suggested as, like, examples of what they would do, those are very specific, and you wouldn't necessarily put those in the code, like, you're not gonna put in the code that you're gonna send a letter to the, but, um, we will work on this language to make sure it encompasses what, what you guys are shooting for.
Thank you.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alderman Turner, and who was second? Alderman Donanworth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I want to start the meeting at, um, 7:10, okay?